This meeting of county council to order. It's four oh one on January fifth. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Showerman. You have a optional prayer or invocation?
Yes, these are just words of wisdom from Benjamin Franklin for starting a new year. It's be always at war with your vices, at peace with your neighbors, and yet each new year find you a better person.
Right on. Thank you. And I'll call the roll. Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Clear.
Here.
Mr. Rastetter.
Oops, you lost him.
We'll get back to him. Mrs. Showerman.
Here.
Mr. Shank.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Mr. Rastetter, I'm assuming that's a yay.
Yay.
Very good.
Yay.
Is there anyone from the public who desires to be heard? Anyone from the public? You have three minutes if you desire that. Going once. Going twice. Going three times. All right, that brings us to new business. The purpose of today's meeting, it occurs at the beginning of every year. County Council elects officers within its ranks. That is chairman or and vice chairman. I open up the meeting on this day, and so we'll go right to the business of the possible, possible motion to select a 2021 chairman of Erie County Council. The floor is open. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And could you tell me who you move to propose to that position?
That would be Carl Anderson, sir.
Carl Anderson for chairman, moved by Mr. Shank, seconded by Mrs. Clear. And in the roll call vote, Mr. Anderson. It's all right.
Yes.
Mrs. Clear.
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman.
Yes.
Mr. Shank.
Yes.
Mr. Horton. Sticking all my might to sit not say Chairman Horton. Because we got through that year already. Anyway, Mr. Anderson, congratulations. You are the chairman of county council for 2021. And I will officially hand over the gavel to you for the continuation of new business.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And I want to thank my colleagues for the confidence that they have shown in me to elect me. And I'll have a few more words to say later in the meeting. But next on our agenda is the a motion to select the vice chair for the coming year. Yes, Councilwoman Rennie.
I would like to move to nominate Kim Clear for Vice Chairperson of County Council 2021.
Second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Rennie and a second from Councilman Horton. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, we will close the nominations. Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
The selection of Kim Clear as Vice Chair of County Council. Mr. Rastetter.
You're muted.
I'll come back. Mrs. Rennie.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
That was yes. Yes.
Mr. Shank.
Yes.
Mr. Horton. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clear.
Yes.
Chairman Anderson.
Yes. And congratulations to Vice Chair Kim Clear.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a presentation and an honor that we would like to, to give and recognition to past chairman Andre Horton for the, the service and leadership that he has shown to this council, to our staff and to this county government place that, that he has lived and grown up in and continues to make great strides and progress in the things that he believes for the reasons that he believes and the love that he has for this community. We thank you for your service, Andre. And we have a gift for you, which Doug is going to bring in and, and present to you. And I'd like to, to read what it says. It says, "To Andre R. Horton, who displayed robust leadership and a fighting spirit while breaking down barriers to education and opportunities as chairman of Erie County Council during 2020. We, as your colleagues, respectfully present this to you today. And thank you once again for the leadership that you have shown this council." Andre, I'm sorry, you're, you're breaking up a little bit. I don't know if you can raise your volume or. We certainly want to make sure we hear your comments. Yeah, we, I can hear you now.
Okay, I said, first of all, thank you. So very kind of all of you to consider anything that was accomplished in 2020. Very turbulent and trying to accomplish without all of us and our wonderful force. And so thank you. And as much as this award, I guess, is given to me, it's an award that we all appreciate. And I want to thank you for allowing me to chair the body during the 2020 session. And I look forward to working with you in a successful 2021.
Thank you so much, Andre. Congratulations. Next on our agenda, I would like to make a few comments and lay out some agenda items for 2021, which are, are things that I believe we need and can accomplish and other things that we have a vision to accomplish. And I think have the will and the vision to accomplish. But first, let me thank you, my colleagues, for electing me chair. It's an honor to serve this body. And certainly, as Andre has expressed, this is a group of talented people who are committed to this community. And without question, to be elected as the, the chair of this body is certainly an honor. And I also want to recognize our former colleagues, Scott and I, who came in together on council and Andre was already here. The three of us had the opportunity to work with Fiore Leone, Kathy Fatika, Carol Lowell, and Dr. Kyle Faust. And I must say, four of the most committed public servants that I've had an opportunity to know. And the experience that they brought along was, without question, tremendous. I still reach out to them and ask questions about council and ask their counsel for things that we're working on. They are such a vital part to this community. And I just wanted to, to give them a shout out. And then recognize the four new members of council who stepped in last year, hit the ground running. And then certainly, as the rest of the country faced, we ran into a brick wall when the COVID pandemic hit. But without question, each and every member has stepped forward and stepped up. And under very tedious circumstances and, and much pressure and confusion, this council banded together, stuck together in unity. And although we all have our own opinions and, and are opinionated, we, we do that because of the love for this community and the respect and responsibility we have for the residents of our district. And but ultimately, we come together and work out those differences and pound out legislation for the betterment of this community. And the community is better for that. And we will continue to better this community as we all continue to work together in a unified fashion. As I said, I'm honored to be your leader, but I will also be a listener. And I think that is equally as important to not only lead away, but listen to each and every one of you and the concerns that you bring to this council in regards to your districts, for the people that you serve and for the issues that are important to you and the community that you live in. You know, I've been blessed throughout my life to have this opportunity to serve. And there's not a day that goes by that I don't drive past the 500 block of East Sixth Street to make sure that I stay grounded in knowing exactly where I came from. And any place that I'm able to go began there. With my parents, my mother and my grandmother taught me how to work. And my father taught me how to believe, believe in myself and believe in others. And he gave me advice when I began to get interested in public service. And he said, "If this is what you will choose to do, then the advice that I give you is stand up for something, not against something." And that's how you can make the community a better place. I've tried to live up to that and will continue to, to live up to that as long as I'm in public service. I, I've had an opportunity to be mentored by such people as Millard Luther, Anne Grenwald, Sally Kohler, Dr. Garvey, Rusty Cunningham, Barbara Hayfer, Tom and Michelle Ridge, Tom Hagan, Ron DiNicolà, Phil English, and so many others who have helped me participate in this community, to be involved in this community and to grow and to learn about all the different aspects of this community to be able to serve it better. And I thank all of them for the support that they have always given me over time. And certainly, I, I do all of this because of love of community, but because of love of my family. Evelyn and I have two wonderful children, Autumn, who has just married, and now my son-in-law Nate and young Carl. And then raising my wife's niece Julie. They are as the center of, of everything that's important to me and that I try and accomplish on behalf of the community. So I thank them for all their love and support that they've shown me and that hopefully will continue to show me throughout time. And, you know, certainly, it's important, moving forward, that we continue, particularly coming out of this pandemic, to be aggressive and bold, but fiscally responsible and, and fiscally accountable. And I would like to propose that as I bring forward some of the elements of what I'm interested in doing as we reorganize council today. We have just elected the vice chair, Vice Chairwoman Kim Clear. I have also asked her to chair the Finance Committee and Scott Rastetter to be the Vice Chair and Mary Rennie to chair the Personnel Committee and Brian Shank to be the Vice Chair. One of the first orders of business this council will have to undertake is having to set the salaries for the elected officials who will be elected in 2021 to take office in 2022. So immediately, I am going to form a compensation committee. That this committee will fall in line similarly with what we believe will be the leadership of the election board. And so I have asked Mary Rennie to chair this committee, Kim Clear and Ellen Showerman to serve on the committee. And with also with advice and consent from Brian Shank, who will be the four members of the election board. This year, the even members of county council will be elected, the county executive, the sheriff, and the district attorney. We need to do this work quickly and have the recommendation brought to council and passed before petitions are taken out on February 16th. So as I said, this will be one of the first orders of business for this new council. Next, we have several items of unfinished business that I believe this council will work on and, and deal with and take care of. And those include, the, the, the chamber has come forward and asked for support of this council for the initiative that they're undertaking, recreating their mission, positioning themselves to be an economic leader in this community. They've come forward and asked for support. We had tabled that initiative. At the time, there were some members of council who weren't quite clear what the ask was or whether or not the plan that they brought forward was complete. So we have asked them to come back to us at the beginning of this year to come forward with a plan. So this council can support the endeavors with them as a community partner and to do that in a manner that we recognize as not just spending taxpayer money, but it making an investment with a community partner to help move this community forward. We will also be working in a similar vein with the Redevelopment Authority. And they have brought forward a proposal to have a loan program, particularly steered for minorities. And we are going to ask Tina Mangene to further bring to us the final plans and strategy that she wants to bring forward to initiate this plan and how she intends to use the seed money that this county council will allocate to leverage those funds to be able to grow this loan program so it can make a positive impact in the community. We also will have Visit Erie coming back to us as they prudently chose not to just spend money during the COVID period from the CARES Fund, but to return some of those funds so they could be reallocated and be put out on the street immediately. And but they, they still need to put forward the advertising once we get through this COVID epidemic to make sure that we are attracting people to our community and using those funds in the best way possible. So we anticipate they will come back this year. We also will undertake discussions for the position of the diversity coordinator and whether that position will really come forward with a plan of action and a plan that will not just essentially, you know, end up being a position and, and not accomplish much, but a position that will really make an impact and have action that we can make a difference in our community and diversify in a very proactive manner. With that being said, county council has a plan to reorganize our staff. Of all the departments of county government, particularly since I have been here, many of those departments have grown substantially. But as I know, over 20 years, the county council office has not expanded. But the workload certainly has, particularly undertaking the manual work of the, the new laws of the election code of Pennsylvania. It's really put a strain on our staff. And we, we have one of the greatest staffs that, that we could ever ask for. And to, to Jill, to Nicole, and to Doug, and, and also to Tanya. As we've said before, our, our hats are off to you. We very much appreciate, and it does not go unnoticed, the work you do on behalf of county council. Now, I don't want to say too much of positive things about you because we don't want anybody stealing you guys away. We want to make sure that you stay right here. But we have a plan to realign the office to create a position rather than two separate positions. One position that would entail being a deputy clerk and a deputy supervisor of voter registration, then opening up a, the position for Executive Secretary because we already have somebody in mind for that position as I just described it. So we will fight to continue to move that forward in 2021. And we will also have Pleasant Ridge Manor East, as we've just received a final report that council had undertaken beginning in 2019, finally finished at the end of 2020. I believe, working in a positive way with the administration, that it's time that we move on Pleasant Ridge Manor and make some decisions. We now have the information that we need and we can accomplish those goals while working with the administration, you know, to ensure that we, in essence, you know, preserve what's best at Pleasant Ridge Manor East for the future. One other committee that I will just briefly mention that I would like to form this year is, and this isn't a formal title, but, you know, as we work through the pandemic and, and we work towards eradicating this COVID-19 strain on our community and on our people, I, I believe we should step forward with a vaccine community awareness committee. This is not to interfere with the work that the administration or the Health Department does, but to enhance the work that they've been doing. Many of my colleagues have suggested to me that they have been inundated with calls concerned about when the vaccine is going to get here, how it's going to be administered, where it's going to be administered, you know, and some have even come forward with concerns of not wanting to get the vaccine. So, you know, this, this is certainly an important undertaking, perhaps one of the most important undertakings that's going to occur in 2021, particularly to get our economy back up and running again. And so I have asked Ellen Showerman, who is, will be our liaison to the Health Department, to also take this on as a leadership role. And she has agreed to do so. I have not named other members to the committee. But Ellen, we thank you for stepping forward in that vein. And then a major initiative that I would like to see us undertake in 2021 is the creation of a Economic Impact COVID Revitalization Committee. And I have asked Kim Clear to co-chair this committee with myself and Brian Shank and Mary Rennie to serve on this committee. Essentially, what we want to get to is how has the COVID pandemic negatively affected the economy of Erie County? And how can we begin to plan and have strategies and have actions to be able to move forward as we come out of this pandemic? And we're talking about a pretty substantial undertaking. We are going to ask the assistance of Agra. We thank their board for a willingness to participate with us. We're going to ask them to be an administrator and, and design consultant for us with this and have Perry Wood and his staff working with us. And I think all of us, it would be safe to say, were very thankful and impressed with Perry Wood and his staff as they came forward with a bold and aggressive plan at the beginning of the pandemic to ensure that people did not go hungry, people were not homeless. And they really stepped forward at a time where government was transitioning and things were falling through the cracks. So our hats off to them for the work that they've done. And we appreciate their willingness to work with us on this committee. We're also going to engage such people as a, a community partner like the Jefferson Educational Society, who will work as an community engagement partner with us. The Chamber want to thank James Grunkie and Amy Murdock for their willingness to work with us on this committee. They are undertaking some steps of their own in the first quarter to understand the depths of the effects on employment depths of the effects on employment and how employment will reinvigorate the community as we come out of the pandemic. And we appreciate their expertise and their knowledge and their involvement with us. And we have several other community partners that are willing to step forward to give testimony as we have public hearings, to have expert witnesses come forward so we can really get to the root of how this COVID crisis has affected our economy. We want to have a public hearing in each of the seven county council districts. We anticipate this is going to be a six-to-nine-month process of gathering information and then disseminating that information into a report to come back to council. We want to look at such things as volunteer firefighters and farmers, from the impact study in Corey to the convention center, from the minority communities and the New American communities to small business and manufacturing. We want to look at the impact that's been felt in certain industries like restaurants and bars and other industries and community endeavors like the Erie Bank Sports Park. So this is going to be a broad undertaking, and I really appreciate the members of council who have been willing to step forward to be on this committee. Two other things that I'd like to quickly mention, and that is two things that I've yet to accomplish, that I had as goals of mine when I ran for council four years ago. And certainly, one is lifelong interest of mine, and that is in the area of history and historic preservation, to create a historic authority in the potential recreation of Fort Presque Isle. I have talked with a number of people and have uncovered the potential resource for us, which is being done in other parts of the states, particularly in Allegheny County, where they have the regional asset district. There is an initiative being undertaken on the eastern part of the state, that the timing this year may be perfect for us, but we're going to have to have other community leaders involved, our state legislative delegation, and certainly, our state senator could play a big role in helping Erie County secure these funds and be able to undertake this type of initiative. And then finally, is, you know, something that's always concerned me as we look to reinvigorate the inner cities of Erie, Corey, Union City, and other places throughout Erie County, where we have allowed of the people who serve the government, whether it's the city or the school district, firefighters or police, to not need to reside within those particular municipalities. I think that is a detriment to the communities that they serve. And although we could never go back and require that they would continue to work within and live within those parameters, what we can do is create incentives as they look to diversify in those particular departments and offer homes that are sitting in the redevelopment authority inventory, the land bank inventory. We can give them incentives on taxes, similar to what Alerta does, but this would be, you know, particularly a break on the property taxes for a certain period of time and/or grants to help rehab homes and to have the presence of those people who are serving our community back in the neighborhoods. And although, under both of these last two initiatives, I'm not going to form any committees as of today, these are two other initiatives that I'm hoping this council can get to this year. And, you know, finally, I just want to make sure that I emphasize, you know, if we're standing still, we're really falling behind. This is a time where we need to be bold and aggressive, as I said earlier. We need to be patient and persistent. And I believe, together, we can continue to build a new Erie County. I believe in the resilience of the people of Erie County. I believe in this council. I believe in the commitment that this administration and the people that worked for Erie County have to this community. And I believe that all things are possible when we united, work together to accomplish common goals. Once again, thank you for the honor to serve you as your council chairman for this year. These are just a few of the initiatives I see on our horizon. And as we know, there will be several other initiatives that come forward, and we will be prepared to handle those as well. So with that said, I would move forward in our agenda and ask if there are any other comments from members of council. Vice Chairwoman Clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to, I first would like to thank our past chairman Horton for the last year on council. It was our baptism by fire that we had last year, and his guidance and leadership really took us to a place where I feel like we are, I look around and I see all of our faces, and I feel like we are ready now, we are ready to take this on. And, you know, the pandemic, of course, is not over. And however, I guess I'm seeing council and the committees that you have decided to form and the vision that you have for council for 2021 in a true leadership role. And I'm excited that we are all going to be a part of that. I feel like we can be the compass for the county and take us to that next step, that recovery and response that we need to, that we need to be focusing on to move forward. Yes, we still have the pandemic. We still need to get people vaccinated, and we still need to keep people safe, but at the same time, keeping that eye, not just keeping the eye, but walking toward the future. And we have a compass to do that. So thank you very much. I'm excited to work with everyone this year on all of this.
Thank you, Vice Woman Clear.
I yield.
Any other members of council? Councilwoman Showerman.
I just wanted to congratulate both of you and to say that I can't believe it's been a year already, and it's been an amazing year, but it's really been a pleasure working with all of you, and I look forward to doing the same this year. I think there's a lot of potential and a lot of opportunity, and I'm proud to be part of that endeavor.
Any other members of council wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, that brings us to the end of our reorganization meeting. Our next meeting will be our first finance meeting of this year on January 14 at 4:00 PM, followed by our first regular scheduled meeting, January 19 at 4:00 PM. With no other business to come before the council, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Peace out, everybody.